Good morning. You're up at the Crawford County Board of Commissioners meeting for January 24th. We're gonna start with a pledge. Commissioner herself.
So moved.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the highest court of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Scott. Any approval minutes from the full session on January 10?
So moved.
I'll second. Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
An approval minutes for the work session on January 17th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes. An approval of payability amount of $2,228,411.96 for the period ending January 23rd, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
It's probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Show?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
There were no executive sessions, any public comment. Okay? We'll start with the Conservation District.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Good morning, Tracy. So two items today on behalf of the Crawford County Conservation District's Agglow Preservation Board. The first is to request your approval and signature on the certification of funds for this program in the amount of $5,000. This is a budgeted item.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
I'd be today also then to request payment on those $5,000 funds as well as the administrative funds of 4,500 and both of those again budgeted.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes. Thank you. Tracy, real quickly before you leave, I have those certificates that have to be signed. Are those gonna go back to you?
One would go to you and two go back to me.
Okay. I have them upstairs. I'll get them to you. Okay. Domestic relation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We just had a parking increase by the City of Meadville, raising our spaces from $40 to $50 per month. It is a budgeted item. The contract is approved by the county solicitor and costs the county our $4,080 per unit.
So moved.
Second.
It's probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Show?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Human probation.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you.
I have two items. First item is seeking approval for our maintenance agreement to cover the amount of $3,940, which is a budgeted item. This covers our warranty and support agreement for our electronic monitoring equipment and telecom fees for 10 units for one year.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Thank you. Second item is requesting approval for our use level of service case management inventory test usage agreement. That came effective January 1st of this year. This is between the Juvenile Court Judges Commission and comes from the budgeted, from the county budget. The cost of the YLS assessment has increased to $3 per assessment and this is due to new software that connects our case management system to the copyright owner of the YLS.
So moved. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes. Thank you. The court of courts.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Okay.
I am here requesting payment for my annual association dues to both the parking for Monetary Services Association and to the Register and Organants Court Association. They're each $625. They cover the year of 2024 and they are the line items in the budget.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. This is specifically Commissioner of the Retschert Willows Court of Organants Court.
Yeah, I think we'll take them separately because they're supposed to separate.
Okay.
It probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Show?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes. And I will move to issue payment to the Pennsylvania State Association of Monetaries and Verbors of Courts.
Easy for you.
Yeah.
I was like, it's a lot of syllables in that association.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Adult probation.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Hey, Trevor.
Good morning, Trevor.
I have two items this morning. Approval to pay the invoice in the amount of $3,873 for the 2024 lifespan maintenance fee to the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
And next, approval to pay the invoice in the amount of $1,133 for the sixth class county annual assessment for County Chief of Adult Probation and Police Officers Association.
So moved. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Show?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
The chief assessor.
Good morning.
Good morning, Joe.
I'm here to ask you to ratify a payment for a check that's already been cut to the Assessors Association of Pennsylvania for the winner of Certified Pennsylvania Valuator Classroom Registration for a valuer trainee, Nick Lynch, in the amount of $2,350. Classes start Monday. Book should be here today.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Your registry reporter.
Lawrence Fisher.
Good morning, Joe.
I'm here this morning to request approval of the Pennsylvania Register of Annual Membership Fee in the amount of $625. This is a budgeted item.
So moved. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Second item is requesting approval of the Pennsylvania Register of Wills and Organants Court Annual Membership Fee in the amount of $625. This is a budgeted item.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Show?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
And lastly, requesting approval for the Reynolds Business Systems invoice in the amount of $1,922.80 for the annual fees for ongoing storage of registry recorder P V F A images. This is also a budgeted item.
So moved. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Public safety, Director Bevere. Good morning.
Morning, sir.
I've already used that today just so you know.
He's gonna go sing a sad country song.
Alrighty. We'd like to approve the agreement with the Spader Company for annual inspection of the public safety buildings generator at a cost of $722.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
I'm gonna give this one piece at a time. I'd like to approve the purchase of two pilot guides for our protocol system and it costs $1,194.
So moved. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Show?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
With the approved agreement with the Breathing Air Systems for the annual maintenance of the air trailer at a cost of $1,571.70.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Thank you. Approved the annual retainer of $2,500 with McCutcheon Enterprises as Crawford County's contract of hazardous materials.
So moved. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes. Thank you.
Asking for the approval to replace two laptops and one desktop administrative computer for the public safety EMA staff at a cost of $3,158.44.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Show?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
And we're asking to approve replacing the three desktop and four laptop administrative computers for the public safety 911 administrative staff at a cost of $6,813.12.
So moved. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
And requesting approval to replace six desktop admin computers for the 911 center at a cost of $10,101.36.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes. Thank you.
Approved the payment of $21,107 MCM Consulting for continued work on the five-year hazard mitigation plan. That will be reimbursed Thursday night.
So moved. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Show?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
And also to approve the contract with MCM Consulting to provide a P-25 radio deez assessment for Crawford County at a cost of $72,000, which will be covered with our wireless legacy lines.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Randy.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
For our statement this morning, we're asking approval to pay an invoice to HRG Engineering in the amount of $17,000 for their November engineering services with the East Branch Trail Knox and Kane Project. This is paid for out of our ARC power grid.
So moved. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes. Next, we're asking to approve a payment for Horizon Construction Group in the amount of $142,299.80 for improvements to the Titusville admire complex. This is paid for out of Titusville's 2022 CDPG program.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Show?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
Next, we're asking to pay an invoice to Patchak MTR in the amount of $1,808.82 for their December engineering services with the Titusville admire complex project. It is also paid for out of the Titusville 2022 CDPG program.
So moved. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
We're seeking approval for a pay application to Horizon Construction Group in the amount of $188,230.58 for Knox and Kane construction services. This is paid for out of the ARC power grid.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
We're asking for approval to pay an invoice to Vanango Borough in the amount of $7,578.94 reimbursing engineering services for the Carl Gorden Park. This is paid for out of the county's 2021 CDPG program.
So moved. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Show?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
We're seeking approval to pay an invoice to Dyson Helmy in the amount of $3,782.98 for their November engineering services for the Carl Gorden Park project. That is reimbursed out of the 2021 CDPG program.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
I'm also asking for, to pay an invoice to Michael Baker International in the amount of $9,132.31 for their contracted services with the county's comprehensive plan. This is paid for out of our state facilities transition closure program.
So moved. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
The next three items are for ratify. We're asking to ratify approval of a resolution designating myself as the 2024 Community Development Lot Grant Program signing afterward.
So moved.
Second. Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Show?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
Next, we're asking for approval to ratify a contract with Cochrdon Area Public Library for the use for the Crawford County Planning Commission's public meetings on February 26th and August 26th of this year.
So moved. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion.
Zach, remind me, you may have told me this already. Are any of these locations, is there a cost associated?
There's no cost for any of the locations that we're.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
And finally, we're asking for approval to pay an invoice for Adobe Inc. in the amount of $659.88 for Adobe Creative Cloud License and it is budgeted.
So moved. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
If I may take a moment to put an informational announcement out to the public.
Please.
For folks that are still interested in the whole home repair program, unfortunately, due to overwhelming interest, we've had to close the program. We're still getting phone calls, emails about it. If future funding becomes available, we will reopen, but right now the program is closed.
Thank you, Zach. I need to go over that. County maintenance. Good morning. 21.
Mark.
Asking to ratify approval of invoices for the remodel of the new finance office on the second floor for $114.73.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Show?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
Asking to ratify approval of invoices for the remodel of the new GIS office for $3,500 for folks born in America.
So moved. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. I've probably said this a dozen times, but with our own maintenance staff, sure it looks good and saves a lot of money. Certainly appreciate it. The office is up and running if someone wants to look at us.
Yep, it's great.
They moved in yesterday, didn't they?
Monday.
Monday. Looks great. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Asking approval to pay Stan Tech Consulting Services for engineering services on the NPDES permit for the parking lot project behind the courthouse for $7,650.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
And asking approval to pay to each group for engineering services for the parking deck rehab for $854.66.
So moved. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Show?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes. Thank you.
Sheriff Powers.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, David. Yeah, David, I think that if you just wanna do A through D, it's probably okay. It's all the same. Just wanna do the amount.
Just include it here. Yeah, it's for, I'm asking for approval for the Pennsylvania Sheriff's Association yearly dues. They total $700 and it's a budgeted item.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Human services.
Good morning.
Good morning, Joe.
I'm seeking approval of the purchase requisition of the Hagen Business Machines of Meadville for the copier maintenance and supply agreement for the admin Toshiba copier. The contract is a one-year contract beginning on 1/10/24.
So moved. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
I'm seeking to ratify payment to the Center for Family Services for ERAP2 admin reimbursements through 12/21/23. The total cost is $77,110.67. There is no cost accounting.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Probably moved in second with a little bit of discussion. Do you have the answers for that yet?
I do not. I haven't heard back from Family Services. I do also need to go through this invoice yet. I went through a previous one, but I need to go through it and just verify what the expenses are. There are a few adds in there that I know offhand. We're not gonna look through. So the amount will be less than the $77,000.
I mean, I would, I would say if you wanna amend the motion, pending those, after those questions we have, or we can still table.
Perhaps not to exceed the amount that was.
There's just a few more questions that I think we need to get answered this, this review, but I mean, other than that, I think, Sue, have you had any chances? Eric been over there? Eric, Eric went over, right?
He went.
Last week?
No, actually, he's going tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yes.
So I, I mean, I would say just as long as those questions are answered, minimal to that, but I don't know. You reached out for those?
I did. I sent an email when we met. Was that a week ago? And I have not heard back yet, so. Do you wanna just table and bring it back?
Procedurally, we do have a motion on the court.
Yeah, I know, and I'm waiting to this. I mean, it's, it's fine. I'm probably going to personally vote no until those questions are answered, but just because I have some concerns with those, but unless you guys want to amend the motion and table, it's up to you. I just know those questions need answering, so. If not, we can hold it.
I'll, I'll move to table.
I'll second that. Let's, let's table that.
Okay, so motion been made to table this until we get those, those questions answered. I think it should be fairly quickly. Eric will be there tomorrow. Might be able to get some of those answered, then we can go from there. Any other discussion? I'll, I'll do a roll call.
Show?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
I'm seeking approval to create appropriate specialist position to oversee and supervise our mental health-based servicing of physicians.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Probably moved in second and just again, a little bit of discussion. I do appreciate, for those that don't know, this is not creations of just new positions. We're actually looking at consolidations and adjustments. And I think this is a, our organizational chart is a moving live document now. And so I do appreciate you guys taking the time to, and I, and I think your, your own staff has mentioned how they can maybe handle different jobs and tasks. And I think at the end of the day, we'll have a revised organizational chart, but I think it's good for the, for the system. So I do appreciate you guys' time. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
I'm seeking approval of the fiscal year 23/24 CYSJP contract with Samantha Egger, MDIT Coordinator, Child and Family Advocate. Samantha's position is funded by a PCCD grant. There is no county match on this grant.
So moved. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
And finally, I'm seeking approval of the fiscal year 23/24 CYSJP contract with the Children's Home in Pittsburgh for foster care services. We had discontinued contracting with this provider due to not having any apt replacement with them since April 2018, but we have an emergency placement on January 3rd.
Second.
Then probably moved in second in any discussion.
There was just one placement today?
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Show?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes. Thank you, Sue. Thanks.
Thank you.
Finance.
Good morning.
Thanks, Deb.
For your approval, I have the following invoices. Invoice number IN23-20528 to UPMC Health Plan. It's a refund to them of an overpayment of room and board in the amount of $574.60.
So moved. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
The second is to CHAPS. It's the 2024 budgeted allocation in the amount of $16,600.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
The third is to Act of Aging. It is their 2024 budgeted allocation in the amount of $8,000.
So moved. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Show?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
The fourth is invoice number INB057839 to CCAP. It's our 2024 sixth-class CCAP dues in the amount of $17,756.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
Show?[1419.58]
Yes.
And the fifth one is invoice number I N B zero five seven three six seven, again to C cap. It is our P cop, yeah, I'm sorry, P contribution in the amount of three hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. This is our workers' compensation.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Sealy?
Yes.
Shell?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
And for ratification, I have invoice number one five five six four eight dash zero to P A County's Health Insurance. It's our January two thousand twenty-four health insurance premium in the amount of four hundred and sixty-four thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars and ninety-nine cents.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Shell?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
But the second one is invoice number eight three zero seven three to Assured Partners T J S Insurance. It is the eleven one twenty-three to eleven one twenty-four general professional liability coverage tail for the care center in the amount of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second and just for discussion purposes, this is a requirement, uh, for the sale of the, uh, home itself and provides coverage beyond the term, as well as.
It does. It, it covers long beyond.
Yeah.
So.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
Shell?
Yes.
And the third one is invoice number eight three zero six nine, again Assured Partners T J S Insurance for the Care Center. It's the eleven one two thousand twenty-three to eleven one two thousand twenty-seven excess liability, uh, coverage in the amount of twenty-one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-nine cents, again a requirement from the sale.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Sealy?
Yes.
Shell?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
The fourth is invoice number zero zero one zero four five six eight five seven to Pitney Bowes Global Financial Services. It is the lease settlement for the Crawford County Care Center, um, to get us out of their lease for their Pitney Bowes machine. The amount is one thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifteen cents.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Shell?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
And finally, uh, to the P A Department of Human Services, again for the Care Center, it's the final two thousand twenty-three I G T payment for the Care Center in the amount of three million six hundred and eleven thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
Shell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Human Resources.
Good morning, Commissioner. I'm requesting the approval of the two thousand twenty-four shirt membership dues in the amount of nine hundred and sixty-five dollars. This is a budgeted item.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Sealy?
Yes.
Shell?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you.
The County Treasurer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Christine. I'm here to ask for approval for payment of the two thousand twenty-four dues for the Crawford County Association of Pennsyl, Crawford County Treasurers, sorry, start this over. County Treasurers Association of Pennsylvania in the amount of six hundred and twenty-five dollars. It is a budgeted item.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Shell?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
And I also ask for the approval for the contract with Government Software Services, Inc. for tax-filling agreement for the computer services, two thousand twenty-four. This is a budgeted item and has been reviewed by Chief Biden.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
Shell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll handle twenty-two A and Scott at him a twenty-two B. Uh, so when we have the, the, uh, applications and the, uh, official appointments to the EMS commission, uh, the commissioners, uh, have a consensus to the group in front of us. Uh, if there wasn't a consensus, they obviously could've slipped those out. However, the fifteen people on the EMS commission, there is a general consensus in our discussions that, uh, all of these folks would, uh, be appointed, so I'll just name them. Phil Taylor, ambulance chief at Townville Ambulance Service, Krista Greer, director of Crawford County Act of Aging, Kirk Dennis, a telecommunicator with the Crawford County D P S, Dave Basneck, the director of Herd Care, Badir Baroskis, the ambulance chief, and finally, Gary Ambulance Service, Evan Kardosh, the deputy chief of Meadville Fire Department, Austin Bates, the ambulance captain from the Springboro Fire Department, Earl Wumpf, a member of the Cochrerton Fire Department, Dan Brzee, a rescue captain from the Cochrerton Fire Department, Amanda Harper, the secretary treasurer for the Borough of Lionsville, Tom Perry, the director of campus safety, Meadville Medical Center, Casey Dixon, a resident of the city of Meadville, Mike Ford, the supervisor for Union Township, Dan Miller, the fire chief in the Bloom Valley Fire Department, and Alte Baskin, a paramedic, and when I mean several, several EMS and fire organizations. Uh, that would be my motion.
I was second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Sealy?
Yes.
Shell?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes. Mr. Shell?
Under the Fire Commission, uh, we also have fifteen members, uh, that applied and we approved, uh, and they are Robert Horvack, who is the township manager for Vernon Township, John Fuller, who's an assistant fire chief at the Vernon Central Health Company, Bob McCartney is an assistant fire chief at Powellfield Fire Department, Jim Pratt, fire chief of West Bean Number Two Fire Department, uh, Jim Brown is an assistant fire chief for the city of Titusville, uh, Joe Schmott is a captain for the city of Meadville Fire Department, Josh Manuel, fire chief in Townville, Eric Coston, fire chief at East Mead Township, uh, John Tracy is the fire chief at Conneet Lake Fire Department, Ryan Sikurski, he's an assistant chief at Cochrerton, Bob Wymer is an assistant chief in Greenwood, Phil Coon is an assistant chief at Sagertown, Brad Johnson, he's a vice president of West Meat Number One, uh, Pete Awbaugh is president of Summit Township, and Chuck Lawrence is the borough manager and past fire chief in Sagertown. And I would make a motion to accept those.
Second.
Probably moved in second in for twenty-two B. Any discussion? Roll call.
Shell?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
There are some new hires in your package. On your table?
Absolutely.
Sorry.
What do we need?
Second.
Probably moved in second in any discussion. Roll call.
Henry?
Yes.
Sealy?
Yes.
Shell?
Yes.
Okay, the following updates we have, uh, next work session, February seventh, and school session on February fourteenth. Commissioner Cummins, Commissioner Shell.
Uh, looking, looking forward to putting the Fire Commission and EMS Commission together, uh, we certainly have our work cut out for us, uh, due to the decline, uh, number of volunteers, uh, in the county, so we're gonna work towards that, uh, to make sure that everybody in our county has the emergency services available to them when they need them. Uh, that's all Commissioner had.
Commissioner Sealy? Yeah, and just to echo that, I mean, the, the overwhelming number of applications we received for these two commissions was encouraging in a lot of ways, that there's a, there's a real desire to fix this and, and do what's in the best interest of the county. Uh, on the, on the elections front, we would just wanna remind folks that, uh, applications for mail-in and absentee ballots are available, and they have been, uh, sent out to those who requested them, but they are, of course, available online and in our office and be, and can be submitted at any time. Uh, we would just also remind, as a friendly reminder to, to Crawford County voters, as the primary season is underway, uh, two of them are already behind us in Pennsylvania, as is, of course, in April, that, uh, at the present time, if you are, if you are not registered as a, a registered Democrat or Republican, the primary election is not available to you. So if you wish to change that status or change your voter status in any way, please contact our Voter Services Office. They'll be happy to help you do that. Uh, the Department of, the Pennsylvania Department of State also can help you with that on their online, uh, on their website, but, but we, of course, here at Crawford are committed to helping you do that should you choose to. Thank you, and on this add to the election discussion, uh, our elections director, Jessalyn McFarland, has told us that the following places need poll workers, and we think it's important that, uh, when you want to have a local precincts and you wanna keep, uh, you know, those precincts in your area, we, we need your help. So, uh, currently, she's looking for poll workers in Athens Township, Cambridge Township, the Center for Borough, Conneet Township, all precincts in the city of Meadville, Pine Township, Sudsbury Township, South Shenango Township, Steuben Township, all precincts in the city of Titusville, Vernon Township, all precincts, West Meat Two, and Woodcock Township. If you're interested, you can send Jessalyn an email, uh, jessafarland@co.crawford.p a.us, or you can call the Voter Services Office at three 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 seven three zero seven. You can also reach out to any of us as commissioners. Absolutely. Actually, to Chief Clerk Gina, and I will tell you, uh, the, the educational process is phenomenal. They do a great job. Please don't think that it's something you can't handle. It is, it is a detailed, uh, excellent message we deliver. Not only that, if you're, and Gina, if you can correct me while you're here, we do train in different locations, so where can we have some of those trainings?
We do. So, um, with two days of the training week, we are here in the assembly room here where we are now, um, for those that want to take the training in the central location. We are, uh, Wednesday of that week, we're located at the Conneet Lake Borough Building, and Thursday and Friday, we are at World Creek Township in the Titusville area.
Good, so there's, there's different, uh, ranges and locations, and like I said, I, I encourage everybody to think about being a poll worker. This is gonna be a very busy, uh, election year. Presidential elections are the busiest, and, uh, certainly encourage you to be part of the process. We look, we look forward to, to people stepping up, and I, and I would say it's not volunteers, but the pay might equate that to being a volunteer, but, uh, you, there is compensation, albeit not a, a ton of money, but we really do it for our, our service to our community, I think. So, uh, if you have any questions, please reach out to any of us or, or Jessalyn. Uh, we definitely need those people. It's very important we have those people. Um, with that being said, there's no other business. I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.